Okay, I will call to order the Haywood County Board of Commissioners meeting for January 17th, 2017, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible) 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 Dear Lord, as we enter into this new year, be with us as we all have hopes of a prosperous and productive year. Help us make decisions tonight and in the future that helps our citizens and our county. Watch over our elderly, our children, and those in need. Protect those that protect us, both overseas and here at home. And thank you for allowing us to live in this wonderful place we call home. In your name, amen.
Okay, just like to thank everyone for being here this evening. The next matter that we have on the agenda is a public hearing, and that is for the consideration of a new stealth monopine telecommunications tower for Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, including a variance request. And that's at 600 Sleepy Hollow Drive. And we have Chris Boyd, our Planning Director, here, as well as Laura Goode, who's the Agent for Selco Partnership. Evening, Chris.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you, Chairman. Verizon Wireless has applied for a, as you say, a monopine 132-foot-in-high stealth tower at the location on Sleepy Hollow Drive that is directly adjacent to the water tower. Some of you may remember this application was made in 2014. It was approved in July of 2015. For unknown reasons, Verizon Wireless did not build this tower prior to the expiration of the permit, so they have reapplied under the exact same conditions as they originally applied in 2014. Part of that is to request a variance from the fall zone. They're lacking just a few feet having the required fall zone for the location of this tower. The property owner, Mr. Fulbright, in which the encroachment would occur, has signed a variance consent, as he did in 2014. So again, it's exactly the same thing. I'm going to ask Ms. Goode to come and present the application on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
Okay.
My name is... Good evening. My name is Laura Goode. I work with Baker Donaldson, and we represent Verizon Wireless in their application for a special use permit and variance for a new wireless telecommunications tower here in Haywood County. I remember a couple of y'all from last time. Previously, I was Laura Askins. I've been married since then, so that's the name change. Also here tonight is Representative from the Lake Junaleska Assembly, who's the property owner for the subject tower, Jack Carlisle, is here tonight. And at this time, I would like to enter into the record the application for special use permit that was filed with the Planning Department with Exhibits 1 through 23, as well as supplemental evidence items 24A and B, as well as the variance application as filed with Exhibits 1 through 8 as filed. I'll go in a little bit more detail about the supplemental evidence items. One is a letter from Michael Haven, who is the real estate manager for Verizon Wireless, to kind of provide a more thorough explanation for why the tower was not constructed after the previous special use permit approvals. The second item of supplemental evidence is a letter, it's a notice letter for this hearing that was sent last week to a property owner who is within a quarter mile of the tower. It was not sent on January 5th with the rest of the notice letters to the adjacent property owners. It was just inadvertently not sent out in the mail with the, I believe, roughly 100 other notices. So we overnighted a copy of that notice to that property owner who lives in Florida. From our records for our previous two applications, he did receive notice of the hearings on both previous occasions. On our, under our knowledge and belief, he did not attend either hearing and did not object or ask any questions at the previous hearings for the same application. But we did send it certified mail. We received today the certified mail return slip, and the letter also asked that he review and sign and return the letter. We provided him with a prepaid postage envelope, just saying he acknowledged receipt of the hearing notice and that he would not object to the application on the basis that he didn't receive notice on January 5th. We will continue to try to look for that in the mail between now and y'all's next meeting when you would vote on the application, and keep Mr. Boyd informed as to any developments with that. I've provided my email address and telephone number in case he has any questions as well. Again, the property owner for the subject property is the Lake Junaleska Assembly. It's located at 660 Sleepy Hollow Drive in Waynesville, North Carolina. It's approximately 87 acres. It's unzoned, and we are requesting a special use permit to construct a new 132-foot-tall monopine tower, which would be designed to look like a pine tree, so it would blend in with the surrounding trees that are already on the property. And we would also ask for a variance from the fall zone setback, but I'll discuss more in depth in a minute. So just as a reminder, the purpose or the network objective for this tower, there's two reasons for this tower. One, there's a significant gap in coverage in the area that has bounded, well, if you go to the north of Highway 19, south of I-40, and east of Highway 276, there is a gap in coverage there. There's an existing Verizon Wireless facility. It's called the Ivy Hill Site. It is providing some coverage, but due to the change in terrain north of Highway 19, it's unable to provide coverage to that area. So that's one reason that this new tower is needed. The other reason is because another existing Verizon Wireless site, it's called the West Canton Site, is reaching its capacity to service the demand of the customers in that area. What that results in is dropped calls, inability to send and receive text messages, emails, and inability to access the Internet. So those are the two purposes for this site. And this is just what's called a propagation map. It kind of shows, this is how the coverage and capacity is currently in the Lake Junaleska area. And as you can see there, green being optimal, that's what we want, meaning if you are using your wireless device indoors, you should be able to use it no problem. When you get into the red, that means you have to be outside kind of doing this to get your call to go through. So as you can see in that area, there's a significant amount of red, and white just means you're probably going to not be able to send and receive calls. This is what the area would look like with the new proposed tower showing lots more green there. As I stated earlier, and as Mr. Boyd stated, we did file for the same special use permit and the same variance on two previous occasions, in 2014 and in 2015. Special use permits in Haywood County have the requirement that you construct the facility within a year of approval or the permit expires. And unfortunately, on both of those previous occasions, Verizon Wireless was unable to construct this tower within that one-year time period. The letter that has been submitted as supplemental evidence, Exhibit 24A in the binder, it's from Michael Haven, who is the real estate manager for Verizon Wireless for this region in the Carolinas/Tennessee region. Essentially, in a nutshell, what it boils down to is when Verizon is looking to site a new tower, they are looking for the specific need in that area, which here is the gap in coverage as well as the capacity. But it also has to take into account the network as a whole, and it has to make priority rankings for the sites based on where it is most needed to serve the network as a whole. This has become difficult with the increased use of data on phones. That is leading to our capacity issues. It's an exponential increase. We can't essentially put up enough towers fast enough and change out our equipment. We're having to do modifications of our existing towers to keep up with the high demand of Internet and data usage on wireless cellphones and tablets. So when you have that increase in data usage, it leads to unexpected changes in needs throughout the network, and sometimes unfortunately results in the need to shift prioritization of sites. And that sometimes results in the inability to construct within the timeframe of the special use permit. I will say, I have never seen a permit expire. I've had to ask for it to be extended, but I've never seen it expire. I've never seen it expire twice. So this is a rare circumstance here. What I can tell you, and what Mr. Haven's letter states, is that this is on the 2017 build plan. We recognize that there is this need for the coverage and capacity here in Haywood County, and we will do everything we can to make sure that it gets built within this year timeframe. And we appreciate your patience, and we appreciate all the time that you've already given to this application. Does anyone have any questions about that specific thing for me?
Commissioners, have any questions?
Only one I had, and I think Chris, you probably should call it, is it a water tank adjacent to the tower? And no effect there. Chris, with the...
The water tank belongs to the Junaleska Assembly to provide water to that area. Mr. Carlisle might be better dressed to answer that, but previously, no, they've said there's no issues with the water tank and placing the tower in that close proximity.
Anybody else have any questions of Laura, Chris?
Of course, I know, you know, you can't, or you've done all you can do to answer that, yes, this tower is going to be built. But, you know, I know when we, you were here before, we were, most of us were here, and, you know, of course, we all are familiar with that area. And, you know, we've had constituents, you know, talk to us about, you know, the lack of service or whatever, and so, you know, we went out and said, hey, you know, this is going to help this. And then, of course, we're working on, you know, Internet expansion and everything throughout the county. So I would hope that now this thing is going to be built, because I think that it would have helped this area two years ago. So I would hope that that, you're not back here asking again, because I might not want to do it next time.
I understand. I completely understand. Just to go back to your question about the proximity to the water tower, it's actually a great site for that reason, because it's a very rare situation where you have an area here in the mountains where you've already got an existing drive and an existing flat area that has been cleared of trees and graded. We're going to have to do very minimal disruption to what's already there, so it's great, because we're not going to be disturbing the natural area more than is necessary to just put the tower in place. So this just, again, shows you a visual of the property and where the tower will be There's another aerial that, and you can see the water tower that's beside it. That did not come out very well in my conversion of the site plan, unfortunately. This was just a copy of the site plan. See if we can get it better. That's a close-up of that same thing. So you can see where the existing water tower is. There's an existing fence that's around the facility, so we won't have to create a new fence there, and shows, you know, that setback from the equipment building and the tower to the water tower. And that's some pictures for you of the existing site and where it will be located. And in terms, again, of the design of the tower, it will be a monopine to look like trees. It will be designed to accommodate an additional carrier. So if T-Mobile, Sprint, AT&amp;T want to come in, they can co-locate on this tower and reduce the need for towers in the area. And that's just an example of what a monopine looks like. So then, just real quickly, I wanted to touch on the variance that we are requesting. The ordinance requires that we have a fall zone setback. The fall zone must be one-half the tower height. The tower height is 132 feet, so the fall zone is 66 feet. The fall zone setback requirement is 25 feet plus the fall zone, so that would be in total of 91 feet. And that has to be from all property lines. We meet that on all property lines except for the northern property line. We're going to encroach on that northern property by 16 feet 5 inches. The property owners to the north have been notified of this on all three occasions and have signed consent letters on all three occasions. That is Exhibit 3 of the application, the Fulbrights. Additionally, this board has approved that variance on the previous applications as well. Are there any questions about that variance request that I can answer?
I did have one question. Why, why is it only limited to one co-location?
Well, one, that is the requirement of the ordinance. If you're over 60 feet in height, you have to have one additional co-locator. The other reason is because at this tower height, it's very, in the terrain around here, you're not going to have anybody that's going to want to co-locate lower than that. We're just above the tree line here, and so any lower capacity, you're probably not going to have anybody that's going to be able to meet their network objectives that low down.
Okay.
And also, on a shorter tower like this, it's not going to have the structural capacity to hold that same number as a 200-foot tower.
Okay. You have any other questions, Commissioners, right now? Okay?
The one other thing I would mention is that an adjacent property owner appeared at the last hearing, and I believe he is here again tonight. His name is Mr. Stiles. And he brought up some concerns last time about stormwater and erosion control concerning, you know, I think his property is adjacent to the tower property, and concerning any grading we would do or disturbance. He doesn't want that runoff to go into his property, which we completely understand. And at the last hearing, we said that we would consent to submitting the stormwater and erosion control plan to the Planning Department as part of the building application and make sure we're going to be good on permits for that. And last time, the board approved our application with that condition, that we provide that sedimentation and erosion control plan as a condition of zoning approval. And we're happy to do that again this time.
Okay. You guys have any questions? Chris, you have anything else to add?
Yes, sir. About that, I do think that that's critical if this board decides to move forward with potentially approving this, that we do make that a condition. There's been some stormwater issues associated with this site in the past, and some of the folks on the downhill slope have gotten some problems from that stormwater. So certainly, if we move forward, we need to make sure that is a condition, that the county permits that for land disturbing permit prior to construction.
Okay.
Chris, the fact the water tariffs helps us as far as the amount of dirt that will have to be disturbed, is that right?
That's correct. The area is already flat. They will have to do some minimal grading, and with that grading, there's an opportunity to work on some of that stormwater conveyance system to make sure it gets into the right channels and to the proper locations for dispersal.
Okay. Any other Commissioners have anything? Ira, you got something?
I believe that these were entered in the, do you want this?
Yeah, those are part of the record. Any issues regarding that notice? She brought forth the issue regarding the notice to the one individual, and I should have asked about that. Is that going to, and I'm sure those are, it's a requirement to send those notices out within a specific amount of time. Is that going to be an issue here?
It is a requirement of our ordinance to send that. I think that's probably something we need to sort through with our attorney after the hearing to see how this plays out. But certainly, it seems reasonable that if those folks provide some type of documentation, that they have no objection, being the only person that was left out of the notices in the specific timeframe, it's possible we might move forward with that.
Yeah. I was thinking, you know, if you could get some type of waiver from that person, it would probably be helpful. I don't know that our ordinance even allows for that.
I think that's what she asked for. I think they sent a document asking for them to provide something, whether they had objections or not, and based on that notice.
Right.
So I think we have to wait before we can sort through that till we really see what we have in hand.
Okay. I hope they're not all full of cruise or something like that.
He signed the green card for the certified mail. We just got that today, so we can give a copy of that to the planning. You know, they do live in Florida, so I'm not sure how inclined they're going to be to respond. But we will definitely, you know, we've gotten proof that it was delivered to them.
You may want to reach out and tell them it could be important that they do respond because of the way the ordinance is written.
Sure. Unfortunately, all I have is their mailing address, and so I gave them all my contact information. I don't have a phone number for them, because I just got their information from the tax records.
Okay. All right. If you don't, you got anything else? Okay, now we need to open this up to the public. If they want to speak about this matter, you can come forward now. We try to limit comments to three minutes. And this is for not public comment. We'll be doing public comment in just a minute. This is for the public hearing. So I'll open that up now for the public. Doesn't look like we have any comments, and since this is the third time we've had this, that's probably why. If there's no other comments, any Commissioners have anything?
I would just comment, I'm glad that they're going to build it, because the fairgrounds is, coverage is not very good at the fairgrounds, and this will benefit that. So I'm glad that they're going to move forward with it.
Okay, if there's no other comment, then I'll close the public hearing, and the next thing we'll move to is public comment session. And if anyone wants to come forward, I don't have any requests for anyone to speak during the public comment, but I'll open it up. Okay. All right, seeing we don't have anyone for public comment, we'll move to constituent concerns. Brendan, I'll start with you first. You got any constituent concerns?
The only thing I have was, just like to put out a special thank you to our emergency services for the rescue that we had in the Shining Rock Wilderness. I know that a lot of hard work and a hard lot of time during the cold weather when everybody else was at home, around the warm fire was out looking for these two guys that got lost. And just like to say a special thank you to Greg, and Greg, and Bradley for doing that. Both our Gregs, Greg Schupin and our Sheriff Greg Christopher, we appreciate you, and we appreciate what you do.
Well, when I have a positive, Mike and I talked about the Internet and fast-speed Internet and all this. The lady we talked to now has fast-speed Internet, and we said, please go out and tell, brag on us for that. So you got a call too?
Just want to expand on that. You know, a couple of weeks ago, we had that constituent concern, and, you know, that she actually called Commissioner Upton, and, you know, he referred her to me, because I'm on that broadband committee. And, you know, I had a pretty good conversation with her, sent her information over to the county manager. He went to work on it. We were able to pull some people together. They got out there and was able to get them what they needed. And so, you know, just for people that's listening out there, you know, if you can't get, if you got dial-up or you can't, you know, your cable company's too far away and you can't get that, there is some options out there, although it has to do with satellite, has to do a lot with line of sight and all this. This particular incident worked out very well. People are very pleased, and so it's a success story for us, because, you know, we keep chipping away at it, and so, okay.
Bill, do you have anything else?
Let me, I guess I don't want to mention this, but Ira and I attend the Legislative Goals Conference, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners, Thursday and Friday. And Commissioners have before them, we, at the end of the session, we voted on our top five goals for the year, and you have that before you, and maybe we get that out to the press. You know, the first one, Dr. Garrett, is very important to us. In the past, we've asked for the state to reinstate the 40% allocation for school construction. We went at it a different way this time, hoping we can get better results. In the past, they would give us $100,000, no, $100 million, and you can divide that out. That's not much money for 100 counties, so that's our number-one goal.
And Bill, we appreciate you going down there and representing the county, and it's important that the state legislators hear from the county and the important...
Let me mention one more thing, Dr. Garrett, and correct me if I'm wrong. The big talk down there was an unfunded mandate. The legislature's about to put force where they reduce in class size requirements on us, right? But not allotting enough teachers to cover that. So I think you said it would cost us at least a half a million in Haywood County to meet their demands. And I think I saw on TV, Buckland County was $3 million. You can imagine other large systems, what kind of money we talking about. So, again, unfunded mandates.
Thank you, Bill. Kevin?
I just wanted to mention, you know, Stephen King, our former Solid Waste Director, passed away unexpectedly last weekend, and I just wanted to let his family know how much I appreciated him and the public. I think I put a little note in the paper that I never recycled much except for cardboard, but I got talking to Stephen one day and told me about all the things you could recycle. And so I really set my mind to setting up to where we could recycle. And we recycle about two-thirds of our household trash. And the other thing that impressed me about Stephen was, we were talking to him, and we were exporting some of our recyclables to China. You know, so in recycling, a lot of the, it was too bad we didn't get to plan a few years ago. Like, I think that would have been a good, you know, these recyclables go to China and they make them into products and goods. But Stephen was on top of that and just was really impressive in his vision and his experience and know-how, and his passion for finding people to buy those products out in the world, you know? And so I just want to let his family know that I really appreciate him, and I know our board does, and I want to express my condolences to them. But he was a visionary and very much will be missed in our county. And, you know, I was looking forward to maybe if we did get to recycling plant, of what he could help with our recycling efforts in the county to, you know, to be putting the products there. Unfortunately, the recycling industry, our local recycling industry, sometimes they don't even take our recyclables, you know? And he was always good at trying to find where we could take those and turn, you know, trashing the dollars, and he did that, and our county was much better off for that. So I just want to just let his family know that we appreciate all his work. Thank you. Thank you, Kurt.
Mike? And I'd like to reiterate what Kevin said about Stephen. I mean, he really was a visionary and helped take our county from, I don't, we were way down the ladder in recycling until he came along and really changed, actually, the way people think in Haywood County about recycling. I know I'm all the time moving stuff from the trash can because somebody put it in the wrong place into the recycle bin and then going, or actually making somebody move it, so...
That's right.
Kurt, one thing that went unnoticed, he worked with our school system, Dr. Garrett, with the Commission for a Clean County. He'd go into the kindergarten classes and first grade classes and help change their attitudes on what recycling would do for the county. So a lot of people don't realize that, but I learned a long time ago, if you teach a kindergarten child, they would teach the adults, and we'll solve our problem.
Mr. Benhart was here earlier. He had a couple of questions, and I forwarded those on to Candy, and she's going to look into those. And also, just like to mention, David Francis, and we always see David, and he's not here this evening, but his mother passed away, and she's been fighting illness for quite some time. And so I'm sure we all recognize David, he's been around a long time, so just thinking about him this evening. Okay, if there's no other constituent concerns, the next thing we'll do is administrative agency reports. We've got an update on Shining Rock Classical Academy. Ben Butler, who is the school director, is here this evening. Good evening, Ben.
Good evening. Thank you, Commissioners, for giving me a chance to meet you. It's a long time coming, and the first thing I want to do is apologize. We've been working to get this school open since 2013, and that's way too long for me to come and introduce myself to you and put myself at your service. Just a little elevator talk about the school. We started last year as a K-6 public charter school with 230 kids. This year, we're at 360, and we are essentially full in all grades. We're a little slim on the top end with 7th grade. The plan in our current location at 1023 Delwood Road, just across the street from the entrance to Lake Jay, is to grow to K-8, and our hope is to grow into high school as well. We're looking for facilities. We do not have room for more than K-8 on our current facilities. And that's the school in a nutshell. Your time's important. I don't want to waste it with my talking, but I did want to say two other things. We've had tremendous help from your staff, who are really, helped us every time we've contacted them. And we've had great support from the central office at the... And we've had great support from the central office at the county school system as well. They reach out to us when they have something that they think we can benefit from. And Dr. Nolte and Dr. Garrett have been tremendous helps to us along the way. As a school director, I'm very proud of the school. We're small, but we're hoping to kind of reach kids in that small environment. And with that, I would answer any questions that you have and tell you that we'd love to have you for a tour at our school at some point.
All right, commissioners, any questions?
I just, yeah, I've got some questions. Okay, you've got 360 kids now, right?
Yes, sir.
And you're K through six or you're?
K seven. And the goal is to grow a year, each year up to the next grade.
Okay, and so, and you said something about a potential high school?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and so then what would you, your potential enrollment be? I mean, what's your goal?
My goal as a director is not the same as the board's necessarily, but when I wrote the charter, my goal was to be roughly 50 kids per class. We're at about 44, 45 per class and grow through K 12. So you know, if we got up to 650 or so, that would be full size.
And, okay, I mean, so what's your, I mean, two years, three years, four years, depends on if you find a place, really?
Yes, sir. And we're actively pursuing that as well. We've, you know, been in conversations with folks and doing the best we can. We're definitely landlocked where we are. And we've been very, very much helped also by Lake Junalauska, who put us up temporarily last year and part of this year as well. And they're leasing us the property, which is technically in Waynesville at this point. We were annexed for water and sewer purposes. So it all depends, but you know, next year's eighth grade and ninth grade comes after that. We got to have a place to be. We got to have a home.
Do you, you know, we just heard what we were looking at as a potential unfunded mandate for the public schools.
Yes, sir.
Do you all have that kind of issues?
It's exactly the same. What happens is essentially the funding, you fund us as a county roughly 25%. At any point, if I misstate, please, Mr. Duff, please correct me. But roughly 25% of our funding comes through the county school system. 75% comes from the state and the funding formula is the same. The difference for charters is we do not receive funding for capital expenses. So we pay rent, we pay power.
Okay, all right.
No, I will say I have taken a tour of the school and it's really impressive and the classes and the kids are really energetic and involved and I enjoyed that. And we, you know, all the commissioners should probably go by and I know they'll arrange that for you so that you can see what, you know, what they're working with and things. So I was impressed with it and I appreciate the work they're doing.
Being out of those 360 children that you have at the school, how many are from Haywood County and how many are from outside of Haywood County?
Ballpark 95%. Last year it was exactly 95%. I want to say it's maybe crept up a little.
Okay. And does that school provide busing or not? I can't.
We do. We, we're not required to, but what we do is we run a route in the morning that runs up to Balsam Gap and runs down to the Canton Angles. And in the afternoon, where transportation seems to be more in demand, we are busing 100 of our kids and they do two bus routes, essentially the same lines, but we drop in Waynesville and in Clyde as well. The, interestingly, the big shortage we have, we could bus more kids, there's more demand, but we don't have enough bus drivers. The problem is we can't, we can't get bus drivers.
And at a school like that, are you, well, one, do you provide athletics right now or extracurricular activities for the students?
Yes, sir. We actually have a lot of club offerings, even in the younger grades. And normally they start a little older in traditional schools, but we offer them all the way down to kindergarten, sports. We, we've got a basketball team. And I'm trying to think, we're working on soccer, we're working on wrestling. I don't think we're ever going to be a big sport program. We had flag football, which is neat because it's co-ed. And so we're, you know, we're getting the kids involved in those activities, but I wouldn't say that that's the primary focus for us.
Right. What would you say the primary focus is of your school?
The goal for us is to try and offer the most rigorous academic environment we can. And we couple that with what's referred to as experiential education. And there are, you can get into the weeds with that, but essentially it's trying to get the kids out of the classroom as much as you can, so what they learn in the classroom so that it has more meaning. And so a lot of field trips, not just locally, but you know, taking them to plays down in Asheville. We've, we've got a group going tomorrow to the, I cannot remember the acronym for the life of me, but just over the parkway to the old NASA. There's an old NASA facility there that now does tours and educational stuff. So things related to the curriculum that we try and do.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else have any other questions or?
Ben, our Rotary Club, I think your assistant spoke to our Rotary Club two or three months back. My question is, I know you have to take all the state tests, right?
Yes, sir.
But the way you're financed, you have, you have a different curriculum that you have to do. And then at the end, review for the state tests is, that's the impression I got.
We use a different curriculum. It's called Core Knowledge Curriculum and it's content based. And I'll get a little into the weeds because I know your background, but we're a content based curriculum that we use. And we do not do any particular separate preparation for the test. My approach as an academic school director is to essentially say, if you set a standard here and the standardized test is here, you should do pretty well. And so we try and push the students to do well. And I actually try and help my teachers avoid the drill and kill approach to preparing for standardized tests. We are not held to the common core state standards. Obviously, nobody in the state is, but a lot of school systems, when the state mandated that, they went to it. And moving a ship that big doesn't happen quickly, as you know. So a lot of the school systems stuck with it.
So your content is basically parallel to what the school system does as far as the curriculum? Is that what I'm hearing?
There are some places where it differs, but what I can do is I can contact you through the Internet and give you a link to the curriculum. And it's structured basically so that it builds on itself from kindergarten up through eighth grade only. And so you've got specific content for science, language arts, social studies and math. And we actually use a separate math as well.
The problem I found when I was in education, there seemed like there was never enough time to get all the curriculum in that the state asked for. So I'm wondering how you able to get everything in, what you need to get in and what the state wants you to have in. That's tough.
It's challenging. And in particular, we do see, we see places where we, where they diverge. And you've caught me a little bit here. Let me think if I can think of a place. I want to say like, for example, in eighth grade social studies, there is, there's an expectation of, I can't remember which content, but it's, I want to say that our content definitely does not overlap there with eighth grade. So it, you know, it becomes challenging when you get into something like a North Carolina final exam or something along those lines. Now, we, I will say this, that we don't, we are not required to do the North Carolina final exams right now for the teachers who aren't essentially measured by the standardized tests, by the language arts and math, but that, that could change.
Some of them are not, hail to them, okay.
Why not?
One of the things that differs with charter schools, one of the major differences is the fact that we're not held to the same curricular standards explicitly in the law. It says, one of the things that we want to allow charters to do is do other curricula if they choose to. And so if you're going to do that, but you're going to say you have to take all the standardized tests, that's, that sort of makes it so that charter schools have to do whatever the state does. I think that's a constant struggle. I think it's a constant battle and charter schools are always fighting to say, we want a different curriculum. We need some other measurement, some other standard. We do a separate test in addition to state testing called MAP testing. And it's a, it's a growth based test. And that, it's, for example, South Carolina, what they do is a sort of end of grade test. Their version of that is the MAP test. And what you do is you take that two or three times, oh, well, three or four times generally in a year. We take it three times. So we're coming up on our midterm testing and the advantage is, shows you the kid at the beginning of the year, shows them in the middle, shows them at the end, and then they take the same adaptive test the next year. So it, it sort of shows you that growth of that student.
Okay. Is it the same test?
No, sir. It's a computerized adaptive test. It comes in science, language arts and math. And it's designed so that when you get a question right, it gets harder. If you get a question wrong, it gets easier. And so it kind of zeroes in on where you are, where the student is. And then we have other computer, another computer program called Compass that they can use to sort of tune the kids, see how the kid is doing specifically on certain subjects and grow from there.
Okay.
But you know, if I, I mean, I'm in public schools and all, public schools all my life. I would want to play, I would want some of your, some of the leeway that you're getting, I'm sure Anne, Dr. Garrett, Mike are saying, yes. You know, I'd like to set a level playing field so when we test kids, we know where everybody stands. But if, the charter method is really probably the way we started out in education. Before testing, teachers, you know, go in the classroom, they control the classrooms and they talk to their strengths. But you know, testing has moved us to being more rigid, so.
Yes, sir. I agree 100%. In some areas, in particular in when you find municipal systems, you see a little more flexibility and you see school systems kind of pushing to get those opportunities. And in general, if that's, I mean, if you look at that as sort of a decentralization of the control of education, I think that's absolutely right. And what we, what we hope is that we're going to make education better in general. And if that allows, if that allows improvements in traditional schools versus public charter schools, that's great. I think that that's going to make everybody better and that's what we hope to do.
Anybody else? All right, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Sorry, you got one, Brandon?
Yeah, I just wanted, I'm just curious, how many people you have on staff? How many people?
We have this year 22 teachers, but full time, I want to say we're right around 30. And we've hired a couple. We actually are, frankly, we're pretty thin. We've been really pushed this year with our staff and so I'm working with Finance Committee, which is part of our, our school board, to try and increase the staffing that we have in particular. I feel that we are ready probably for an assistant principal. We need help with counseling. We'll be adding eighth grade next year and we're trying to figure out what that's going to look like.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Butler.
Thank you.
All right, next thing is discussion, adjustment to agenda. We have anything we need to discuss? Anything I need to put on the agenda? All right. If not, we'll move to the consent agenda. First item, request approval of January 3, 2017, regular meeting minutes. Anyone have any additions or corrections to those? All right, if not, we'll move to request approval of December 2016 refunds, releases, amendments and discoveries. And we got Judy Hickman coming down the. Good evening, Judy.
Good evening. I'm requesting the December releases, refunds, adjustments and discoveries. We didn't have anything to report outside of just normal business.
Anybody have any questions?
I just got one question. It seemed like there was a lot of refunds or whatever. I guess that was on the convenience fee for, you know, abandoned mobile homes and stuff like that. Was that just kind of all clumped together this time or was that something that, it seemed to be a lot of them there?
A lot of times, if someone doesn't list.
Yeah.
It's automatically entered as it was the previous year. And a lot of times, once they get the bill, they'll come in and say that, you know, it was an abandoned mobile home and they'll provide proof that there was minimal power usage.
Yeah, I mean, but you know, I guess I just had never seen that many at one time. It just kind of, I didn't know whether it's all or just everybody got their bills and decided to come at one time.
Yeah, we usually have a bigger month in August, September, usually right after the bills go out is when we see an increase in those.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Next, we have request approval of December 2016 tax collections update. We've got our tax collector, Mike Matthews. Evening, Mike.
Good evening, commissioners. Up at the top where it says as of November, it should be as of December 31st. It's on both sheets as well. But we, for our current collections, we are at 75.06%. That's down about seven tenths of a percent from last year. We're at seven point, or 75.72%. The difference there is one of our big taxpayers that posted last year in January, or in December, posted this year in January. So instead of paying it on the 31st, they paid it on the 3rd. So that's about $1.3 million. So actually, if you look at it that way, we're probably going to be up quite a bit from where we were this time last year. As far as our delinquent collections, we are at, or 1.262 million dollars. And then next month, we'll have a big rollover from, you know, the delinquents that went past January 5th.
All right, commissioners, you have any questions?
On the collections, 75% roughly, and that was December 31st.
December 31st, yeah.
But there's a whole lot of stuff that come in because the January 5th was.
Really, January 5th was the cutoff. So we had a big, you know, after the 31st.
I mean, do you have any idea, I mean, what the?
You know, I mean, I don't. I know we did about as much in that week as we did the prior week. So I mean, it's, the one thing I do know is, like I said, that big.
I know a lot of people postmarked there's January 3rd.
A lot of people postmark there, right. Yeah, as long as they get them in, get a postmark by the 5th, then we've been backdating them. But like I said, that one, the $1.3 million was a big one and it posted last year in December. And this month, we posted it for January, so. That's the only difference there.
Okay. Other questions? All right, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is presentation of Mountain Projects Community Services Block Grant application for review by us, Ira Duff.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. This is simply the, for more than 40 years, Mountain Projects has received a community services block grant through the Office of Economic Opportunity. As part of their grant cycle, when they go to apply for the new application, and this would be for fiscal year 17 and 18, they have to offer it to the county for review and a chance for the commissioners to comment. This year, they're looking at funding, if they get this grant, three areas. The first, an intake in Mountain Projects to allow people to tell their story one time and receive information about the services. The second is their GED program. And the third is they're working on the Circles of Hope program, which is a program that people get mentoring on how to get out of poverty. So those are the things they're planning on doing with the funding if received. And do you have any questions you want me to submit back to them or any comments you want me to submit back to Mountain Projects?
Commissioners? No, I guess, I guess not. No questions. Thank you. All right, the next is request approval of budget amendments. We've got Julie Davis here, our finance director, and I'm going to let her present those since last time I just told about everything.
You stole my thunder. You're not going to do it now. Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The first budget amendment I have is from the General Fund and this is for public safety. It's actually in the sheriff's office. You may remember that the sheriff asked for some special assignment pay so that some of his deputies could work on what they consider off duty hours for entities in the community, the community college, that type of thing. It has blossomed into a program bigger than what we had expected. We initially budgeted about $25,000. And we're seeing a whole lot more money coming in. We're also seeing a lot more of that expense for that special assignment pay. So I've done a budget amendment for $52,000 for both the expense and the revenue to help cover that for the rest of this year.
All right, commissioners, have any questions about that?
Basically, the people are, I mean, that's money that they're doing on extra at churches or whatever and it's coming into the county for that.
Yes, they're paying.
And we're turning around and putting it back in their budget so they can pay it.
Yes, exactly.
Which I think is a great service.
Any other questions about that? And I suppose because of the increase in funds for that, there's been much more of a request. And I know the sheriff's here, I won't ask him to come forward, but he is here. But there have been more requests for deputies to be on site at different places, Sheriff? Come on up, you need to, you need to get on television.
He needs to be seen, then. Good evening, commissioners. Yes, our requests for special overtime duties have just continued to blossom. I think people nowadays, with the situations that we have within our land, that people feel that they, they need protection at different venues and different special events. I actually wrote down in. I actually wrote down, and if you don't mind, I'll read this really quickly.
Oh, please.
But this year so far, we have worked the Glory Hound Triathlon. We have three different churches that we do church security for each week. We are still working at the AIPAC and Harrison Construction with the paving going on down in the gorge. Our gun shows require us to have a deputy there. Our Halloween events, we, we were just inundated here for a little while right at Halloween, but people wanted armed security. Our youth league sporting events, football and basketball, they require a law enforcement officer to be there. We also are, we provided security for a movie here recently. Weddings, we're, we're at a lot of weddings.
I'm amazed.
And our IVC court hearings that had been held out at the hospital had originally, we had been transporting the IVCs back here to the courthouse. Now the judges are going back out there, but during that time, the hospital paid us extra duty to do that. And the, the U.S. Forest Service is also paying us to help patrol on the weekends and any other heavy holiday traffic that they have. And of course, everything that I've just talked about, we charge $35 an hour. And all of that revenue does come back to the county in, in the form of a check.
Commissioners, do you have any questions about that? Hey, what do you think that the Pisgah Tuscola gang, how many people, how many officers are at that gang?
Well, everybody that I had that, that was not working on the road that night, with the exception of just a couple, was there working. I would say we probably had close to 50 between us, Waynesville Canton, and Maggie Valley. And of course, the Highway Patrol helped us as well. But we had a lot of people there. Of course, you know, you get 13,000 people sitting around a 100-yard football field in a very electric and charged atmosphere like that. I'm glad that we do have that many people. Even if I was sitting in, in the, in the crowd, I don't want to look down there and see that many law enforcement officers, especially as tight as he gets.
I didn't get to sit, I got to stand, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Standing people do.
Absolutely.
Well, we appreciate what you do, Sheriff.
Thank you, thank you, man.
Thank you.
Next is Capital Project Fund, Public School Capital Fund.
This one, you'll remember, I think I brought it to you, an application for DPI, the Department of Public Instruction, for some work in the Tuscola and the Pisgah gyms, the HVAC system upgrade there. The amount of the design fees has been approved by DPI. And once it's approved, we need to have it in the budget so that the school system can start spending that money. It's $28,350 per school for a total budget amendment of $56,700. And once they get everything to DPI and they approve the rest of the project, I think it was about a $400,000 project per student, per school, that will be brought to you as a budget amendment also. And we do have our school facilities and maintenance director here, if you have any questions related to that project.
Okay. And we discussed this, it wasn't at the, was it the last meeting, the meeting before that? I know we had some discussions about.
Yes.
The need for it. It's, the schools are constructed in 66 and it's the same system.
They're 50 years old, that's about as much use as we can get out of them.
Right, I, I know, that, that's good. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I, yeah, I have a question, and I think Joe probably needs to come up. And this is just absolutely my questions, but the engineer, I mean, you know, $56,700, that's for both, both gyms.
That is both for sales.
And they're almost identical. And they charge 24 something for each one of them.
Yes.
That just seems to be a lot of money.
It does, but when you look at the estimated cost of the project, typical engineering fees come in at approximately 10% of total project cost. If this by chance goes to our higher number, which we're anticipating of 800,000, we're well below that 10% margin. It will really depend on how this project bids out as to how our fees lie as far as percentage. But this is also, and I'm not sure if you're aware, whenever we did our walkthrough with the Tuscola and Pisgah gymnasiums, the gym has no air conditioning, so we're, including the air conditioning and the heat in that project, we're also including the design of the locker rooms. So the air conditioning, heat, and conditioning the space in each locker room at each school. So we've added two locker rooms to each gym.
Yeah.
That is in this design fee.
Okay.
And the replacement of a water heater, which was put back in the 60s, too.
Okay, I just.
So there is a lot of work going into this. And this, the design fees are all-inclusive, too. So unless we just, something crazy goes on, there won't be any extra fees for site visits or additional fees from architects or, and they're going to oversee the bidding process as well.
Who was the engineer?
Reese Nolan, Microath.
Okay. All right, that's all I had.
Remind me, the unit will be mounted where? Is that probably over the?
The units are going to be put outside the building on the ground. So nothing will be put on the roofs that will interfere with structural.
So we're not going to mess with that flat roof between the cafeteria?
Correct, we're staying away from the roofs.
Who was the engineering firm? Who did you?
Reese Nolan, Microath.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions?
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Next item is General Fund Legal.
The next one is our legal department. This is back in the General Fund. I'm adding 28,000 to the legal department area, and I'm taking that from contingency to cover some more expenses than we had originally planned for some consultants and for some work in the tax office.
Okay, Commissioners, do you have any questions about that?
Anticipated anymore? Don't know, though.
Excuse me?
Should we anticipate any, any more or?
I don't anticipate it, but you never know what's going to happen as the months go by. Sometimes it gets out of hand, sometimes it stays pretty contained.
Right, and this is actually a better year than.
It has been.
Than it has been. So we, we're trying to do the best we can to avoid any legal action.
That's a good idea.
All right, any other questions of Julie on any of those matters? All right, if not, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. All right, well, next we'll move to, we don't have any old business. And so we'll move to new business. And the first item on new business is request appointment of Johnny Pless as the Haywood Fire East Representative, and Donna Stewart is the Haywood County Public Information Officer to the Haywood County Local Emergency Planning Committee, and Greg Shuping's here with us, and Bradley Jowers.
Thank you, Bradley. Come on forward. Good afternoon. Just wanted to say that everybody wants to ask the question, what's the plan? You know, when something terrible happens, thank, hope, thank goodness, we don't have a lot of things that happen. But every now and then, when a major emergency occurs, how do we respond to those things? How does the county work with the municipalities? How do the municipalities work with other agencies of the county? How do we get resources from outside of the county to come help us? All of these kind of plans happen at the Local Emergency Planning Committee. This committee's comprised of about 27 different agencies. Commissioner Rogers is, is the newly appointed Commissioner for, for that committee. We appreciate you coming to those meetings. We try to have these meetings at least quarterly, but, but sometimes we end up having these things even, even as often as once a month or more often, depending on what kind of activity needs to be done. Just a couple of the recent accomplishments last year, we revised our landslide emergency response plan. So even during a drought, we're thinking about landslides. Hopefully that's not going to happen, but it could. The, the other thing is our smoke detector campaign. I don't know if you saw this in the paper a few months ago, but we put up, we installed over 1,000 smoke detectors in folks' homes in one day. The fire departments were involved, the Local Emergency Planning Committee, along with the Red Cross and many county agencies. We put up over 1,000 in one day at no cost to the citizens. That was huge. And then, of course, along with several trainings and exercises that we try to conduct annually. Our goal for next year is to revise public warning and notification in, on the, on the edges of the terrible situation that happened in Gatlinburg. We want to make sure that we have a good public warning and notification plan for our citizens here in Haywood County to take care of them when an emergency happens. So, but the most important thing that we're here today for is, I'll turn it over to Bradley Jowers. He is our Secretary of the Local Emergency Planning Committee.
Good evening. We've had a few changes in 2016 of two members due to retirement. So the Fire Chief Council has requested your approval to add the Chief of the Center Pigeon Fire Department, Johnny Pless, as the active member for the east end, and also with Donna Stewart as the PIO, to be a part of the membership of the LEPC.
Okay. All right, Commissioners, do you have any questions? All right, then I, I do want to say before we proceed this, Greg, I appreciate you and, and what you do and what you've done for the county over the last, I don't know, how long you've been with the county?
Well, I think about 17 years now.
17 years.
Yeah.
14, and I, and you know, really you, you brought to the forefront. We've had several, we've had floods, we've had slides, we've had fires. And, and you know, I appreciate your leadership in, in having, having all the groups prepared and, and working together. And I think right now, as far as the different departments across the county, they work real well together and, and come together when something happens like the hikers missing the other day. But at any rate, I'll entertain a motion to approve, or a motion that Johnny Pless be appointed as the Haywood Fire East Representative, and Donna Stewart as the Haywood County Public Information Officer to the Haywood County Local Emergency Planning Committee.
So move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Kurt, I want to thank Greg, too, for his work in emergency management. You know, we had these, these fires in Gatlinburg, and they were all over western North Carolina, but you didn't really hear about any in Haywood County. And I had, I had a, actually, I had a U.S. Senator call me unexpectedly. I was like, wow. And he said, he said, how's it going there? And I said, well, we have a very good emergency management team here, and we haven't had any problems. But I know we've had some in the other areas. But I was bragging on you a little bit there, Greg. But we, I do appreciate, you know, a lot of the times the citizens don't hear, because things don't happen, because we've planned and they don't happen, because kind of like Barney Fife used to say, you nip it in the bud, and that's what we've done, that's what we do. So.
Preventive management.
Appreciate it. I appreciate you, Greg.
And, and we made sure to call Kevin ahead of time when it got dry.
I was, I was thinking that, Kurt.
All right, well, okay, thank you very much.
Hey, Greg, the, the rescue, I was, Ira was sending me emails and I was down to the coast of North Carolina, not having the bad weather, but you knew, you had to hit the hikers that day because it's going, it was going to be below zero that night. So appreciate all the groups hanging in there. And Ira, you standing out there with it.
Actually, I was only out there briefly. Donna Stewart was the PIO. I was mostly in the 911 center listening to what was going on.
Well, I thought you, I, I mistook that email. I, I thought you were out there with it.
Donna was.
We had a lot of wonderful help from a lot of counties.
All right. All right, thank you. Uh, next item is request appointment Teresa Allison, Economic Services Director, to serve on the Southwest Child Development Commission Board. Is Stoney here?
Actually.
You going to sit in for Stoney?
I'm going to sit in for Stoney.
Okay.
Tonight, he is at the Health and Human Services Board Meeting, and I, I think he was doing a tag with our Commissioner Rogers, who is here tonight. But on that, that is the Southwest Child Development Board. The, we have the contract and passed through the money to handle all of the childcare subsidy. Stoney Blevins, myself, sit on that board. And then also asking that Teresa Allison be appointed as the third from Haywood County.
Okay. Any questions, Commissioners? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Teresa Allison to serve on the Southwest Child Development Commission Board.
Make a motion.
Thank you.
All right. Motion is second, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Next item is, I'm going to announce that we're going to have a work session on February 14th at 2:00 at the Health and Human Services Agency Training Room. And this will be for the discussion of the budget process.
Yes.
And any items we want to discuss. I guess, Ira, do we need to go ahead and get, get any issues we want to discuss to you now, or are we going to discuss them then?
If you can go ahead over the next few days and send on the issues, we can go ahead and prepare whatever issues you want to forward, and we'll put together a little agenda for the meeting.
Okay, so Commissioners, if you've got any items you want to talk about at the February 14th meeting, if you'll email those to, to Ira or let Ira know in some form or fashion.
Yes, and traditionally, the school and the community college will come in at the second work session we do a little later.
Okay.
So.
Any questions of Ira or discussion about that budget work session? All right, if not, we'll set that, the work session on February 14th. The, that is the end of new business. Next item is the closed session that we have. And so I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session pursuant, pursuant to the attorney-client privilege, North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318.11A3, and to discuss personnel as well, North Carolina General Statute Section 143, 318.11A6.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, all in favor of going into closed session and indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes, and we are in closed session. All right, we are back from closed session. Does anyone have any other county business for us? Anybody? All right, if not, I'll entertain a motion that we adjourn this meeting.
Make a motion.
Brandon's made the motion first.
Second.
Second, any discussion about adjourned in this meeting?
Please not.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. And we are adjourned.